Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order this special Board of Health meeting, it is 1:05. We are currently at Old Town Hall, upper level meetings room, and it is Tuesday, December 27th. This is also a remote participation Zoom meeting. It is a public meeting being broadcast for cable broadcasting and internet posting on YouTube at www.youtube.com forward slash town of Dayton. At this time, I'd like to call a roll.
Paul, the chief over here.
Pat McGovern.
And like to do the pledge of allegiance. Start with new business. Review, discuss act, office manager job description.
So we do. On Thursday afternoon, I sent out a bit revised job description. Based off of the template that the job description templates. That we just had, I would just have the developer. I think for the town, fully raging classification study. You'll know. After the updated job description that we changed the board of health department to a health department. And made all the changes applicable throughout. It's also in regards to the what was initially drafted during the rate of classification study process. There was a lot of like specific detail into the names of the board of health. Out of order health in its subcommittees. And we wanted that to be all encompassing and so like any subcommittee of the board of health. That exists now and with the future. The office manager like would be responsible for preparing. And handling the agenda of public notice minutes. And so we wanted that to be all encompassing. And trying to make related changes. You know, so we didn't. On the second page also, we didn't specify the specific type of software to use. Like rather we described any applicable help. Any applicable health department related software was to be again more encompassing. One of the things which are trying to really build off and strengthen. How you, how you, how you're compared to how we did job descriptions in the past. Is that our applying job descriptions, we are job descriptions. Are like really being four, five, six pages because there was a culture in an environment in town. Like we, so like we're in order. We're in order. When what if we do need to become so like a function in one's job? We actually, oh, you don't have really to negotiate and bargain it within the job description itself, which is a very. Which is a very address process we want. Oh, you know, like in the here and now in 2022, we want to have job descriptions that. So like are able really to evolve based on how a position or a term evolves. And like so like you'll note that actually compared to the. Other three or four page original job description that we had for the office manager, we're trying to streamline and consolidate things. So, so, so that is the post job description. For the office manager. We're hoping to get the boards approved on this afternoon. Then tomorrow night, get the second approval. So, so we can post immediately and begin working to fill that. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
I had printed out three and now I don't know which one is the one that like you're referring to. What does it look like?
The, the last one. So the one with the patch changes where you can see what.
Did change as well, donkey?
The only one I didn't print out.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, I don't have.
Thank you, sorry about that, Mike. Can I ask a question about, because I don't under, I don't, I've never done any work with like unions before.
Yep.
So since it's the union position.
Yep.
There's no, like. I, I agree with not having every single pinpointed item because the things always come up. This, if things come, they go, whatever. But within the union, is there any way for a union employee to be like, well, this wasn't in the job description? Like, are they so focused on that or do they too have?
They do.
Okay.
And, and they. And there's been a tendency to get very focused on it, which my. So to my unit team has the ability to, I would, you know, frankly creates some challenges. So like, I mean, and if we have, so and if we have the job description more generalized. So like from the very beginning, how, you know, that. So it's not too neat to prevent those challenges from coming up from the beginning rather than trying to. Oh, you know, trying to deal with something that may not, so may or may not have been specified. So, you know, further down the road.
And it seems like, like we touch upon that when we talk about that not all duties will be illustrated. That's, that's kind of the safeguard, right? Is that my understanding?
Yeah, yeah, one would hope, but we, I mean, but again, I mean, so yeah, the more general, but I'm saying we have it, the more. Oh, you know, the more flexibility we have in the implementation.
Have anything?
Yeah, we got one question. Small of them. A lot of these things are crossed out, like emergency, preparedness, subcommittees.
Yes.
Why are those being crossed out?
So. So, yeah, like in that, since we tried to adapt, I actually made what we were describing more encompassing. So like we crossed out the other word emergency and is, are the emergency and is subcommittee? Because that actually no longer exists, there is a committee of board health. All those functions have been streamlined under other towns' emergency management director. So that's, that had already been streamlined and then, and then. You'll know that the next committee that has been crossed out is actually the stormwater management committee. And so when, so when we strike that out. Or opposing to strike that out, you know, that we added the following words, like end it's. Our, our ended subcommittee. So the word like in this subcommittee would apply to any and all of order health. Oh, yeah, like any, like any and all of order health, our subcommittees, including the stormwater committee. Because it says, so that already exists and it's already there.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. Well, that is it.
Anything, Patrick?
No, I mean, I just to. To Mr. Mullen point, it, I just, I see it as pretty, being pretty vague. When this was redone, who was, was the health and part department involved in this or?
And yeah, the then, the then. The then chair was involved as well as the, as he then. As he then office manager as well, like in the consultant we use. Oh, you know, she does this for like a bunch of like municipalities, so this. Oh, you know, like it's actually like model of the job description that are like similar positions in other cities in town as well. So it's. Oh, you, oh, you delay, but she like is pretty universal, okay, functional.
Yeah, I just with my background, I obviously have. Four unions and vague job descriptions tend to add a lot of work to individuals. So that's just my concern, I don't want to, whoever this person is going to be, I just don't want them walking into something. And getting piled on, that's all.
Yeah, no, I mean. Oh, no, like I kept that, like, we have, so like, I mean, it's our job and the job, or the department and the board to really make sure like we're managing. The famous of that as well and the workload of duties as well, so.
Any further discussion?
Uh, one, a quick question.
No, I get a bunch of things, but you can say yours first.
Do we have to advertise this in-house first or can we advertise it everywhere first?
Oh, yeah, we cannot attack the direct first, so there's no provision, CBA, that requires an internal posting first.
Yeah, okay.
Good question. Alright, so this is in the board health subcommittees, does that mean it'll be going to the solid waste meetings?
Yes, it could.
Would you bring me to overtime, because right now the office manager that we have gets overtime for board health meetings? Because that's the way the union contract goes when she started working here. So that hasn't changed. So when we bring in this new person, are they going to be doing all these night meetings? So are they flexing the time or are they getting?
So one of the things, one of the things based on the current composition of the solid waste. As a race, our committee, we can even further specify. That language to say that in its subcommittee. Again, it's, I ended subcommittee meetings as assigned. So like if, so like if the new office manager is actually not assigned to solid waste. Oh, you know, then they, then they wouldn't be required to do that. And, and, you know, that would take care of that.
What about the overtime and what health needs? That, that's part of a job description or a contract or whatever, but.
And yeah, that wouldn't go in the job description and that would follow the CPA.
I don't know if they're, they speak on that and this. I don't know what, I think Karen said, I'm not Karen, Carrie. And I thought I am would be the only two that would probably fall into that.
So. And yeah, that, so yeah, that would be something that we'd. With the position vacant, you know, that also, we'd be able to clear up any practice. You know, that may have existed in the past if. Oh, you know, like if we do have a past practice there. But I would first want to. Oh, you. First one, I'd cross reference CBA language to make sure. Like what that requirement and how, you know, that provision is actually reflecting the CBA before we can go down that road. But that then, actually have any impact on posting this stuff.
What about site visits?
Um, I know this is an office manager position, so site visits.
Because all the stormwater site visits, where I was always keen to take notes.
Yeah. I, I think that practice needs to stop. Quite frankly.
I agree.
You're taking an office manager position's current position, bringing them out to a situation where they could be hurt. Or, you know, and now they have a claim against the town, I think it was a bad practice and we started, that should stop. That's just my recommendation.
I agree. Alright, so the board previously voted that the office manager and myself be in Maven. This crosses it off, does that mean the board does not want the office manager to be in Maven anymore?
So no, that, so yeah, Maven would be related to like any applicable. So like any applicable software, like it, so like in sort of help office, Maven is help. So like a Maven is a function of the health department, where Maven would be there.
Well, most towns, it's only the nurse that has access to it, it's not office staff, so.
I think by, I think by not having an introduction is appropriate, but a simple fact that the board will be able to decide who has Maven access or not. I, you know, I'm, again, I'm not sure that a office manager should have access to Maven.
I mean, we have the town nurse that has it and you have it as well. I don't know, generally going by your point of usually the town nurse is the only one that has it, how many people we need to have it?
Well, it's the, you have a gap, if, if you, if the nurse left, then you have a gap. And that was what happened is we had like a full week gap in there, we didn't have anybody. And so if that person needs to be trained, so if they're out and somebody else in the backup, then they can get in through that other password, so.
So, yeah. So, yeah, but like in, so, so, yeah. So, but in the job description and describing any applicable software gift. So I give the board of health wanted to make a policy, a decision that, so one, two, three people within. Like in the, like in the office town, they didn't want to utilize it. So, yeah, that would be up to discretion of the board.
Does that include code, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I know this is something we kicked around before, like any new employee to town of Dayton's required to have ICS 100. But it's not in this job description, is it something we want to be adding to the job descriptions or make part of? This is a part of all emergency preparedness.
So, yeah.
Because I mean, these people all need it too, so.
I keep this in here and I'm certainly not going to speak for him. However, it's my understanding that the ICS training was required when we go to the state or the federal government for reimbursements. Under their disaster declarations, where for people who are managing it, on ICS certified, it negates us from certain reimbursements. If a recent maintenance is taken from the board of health, I don't know how that would be applicable anywhere.
EDS structure. Anybody on our EDS structure has that, which is one of the things here, it doesn't say anybody EDS, in fact, they specifically crossed it off. Which means that the office manager is not going to be doing any EDS work. And then, but anybody on that EDS structure, which is going to include board members and the town council, et cetera, et cetera. They need ICS training to be a part of it, because they need to know what to do when they report to an emergency. So the only problem is somebody not knowing what they're supposed to do. Okay. But it's for EDS only that is, is the requirement, so. Okay, so the chiefs thing is a different kind of thing?
So it's applicable for EDS, that, that's why we're here to confirm and discuss it.
Right, well, again, the problem is the board of health didn't have the power to make, like Mullen go take the train. So, but he had to have it in 30 days to start in here, but I can't make him do it.
Okay.
So, but I think it should be in job descriptions of any new employees that it says they need to have it.
So, I mean, I want to.
So I also pull at home as incident man structure, by the way, EDS, emergency dispensing site.
So, 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 but in order to do the EDS, you need the ICS train.
You don't need to be, but in order to be on that, it would make like easier if people were.
So like it, so like in the additional requirements, if we added back in the, so at the end. Oh, you know, the incident command staff. Training would be beneficial on this law, that would basically take care of that quite effectively.
Okay. And you're adding in what, ICS 100 and then 700?
Is NIM 700 required as well? Because it's required for us, but is it required for?
So 100 is introductory course. Yes, so the, the way we've always done it in the past with right, wrong, indifferent. It is the office manager and myself. Worked out that ICS structure, we worked out everybody's roles, everybody's jobs. We did the annual drills, the in-person drills, which we got away from during COVID because obviously we couldn't do that anymore. And it was a tool that's been ran the whole thing, fire department has nothing to do with it, it's a support health thing for the fancy yes of. Drugs, medicine, whatever we're doing on you, so that falls squarely on the shoulders of the board of health. So. To have the office manager when you're dealing with, you know, the job descriptions and getting sign, you know, signatures from everybody to make sure that they are in everything. You need the bodies and so, yeah, it worked out well, having somebody in the office being able to process all the paperwork.
So. So processing the paperwork as an office manager, like it's different. Oh, you know, than being trained to implement NIMs in the EDS as well. Like one of the challenges which were. Oh, like really like coming off of. Oh, you know, like, oh, you like it, oh, it gives, oh, it gives you back. Oh, you're like my, because the board of health instructor is only five years old. Like we have the prior office manager. Oh, you're like, oh, yeah. I, yeah, we had expectations of, oh, you know, like, oh, like, oh, you like a deposition and expectations were created. Oh, you know, like which actually created a lot of challenges where, so, yeah, the office manager wasn't really an office manager. Oh, yeah, like, so what we're trying to get back to is making sure, so we have a dedicated. Administrative clerical person in the office. Oh, you know, who wasn't. Oh, you know, like in charge of really like the management. Oh, you know, like of the department, but that's happening and we're trying to, so actually like streamline and strengthen that process on another level. But I think, so that's really the genesis of how we really came at this job description. So, so, so we want to make sure we do, so have that to guarantee office. Oh, you know, like an administrative and clerical backup, yeah, and I think that's, so. A kind of difference, we don't, so, so really want. Oh, you know, that person to be running programs and like implementing emergency responses. I think that's like the difference where. Oh, yeah, we're trying to reconcile going forward.
Good point.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm not saying it isn't, but that just needs more work on.
Oh, and there's someone on Zoom.
Alright, Mr. Phillips, you're now here. Sorry, I didn't see you in the waiting room. There's a way for me to change that.
Thank you.
Somebody.
Nancy.
I have to recess.
Yeah, so we're currently talking about the office manager job description. But at the moment, somebody had to step out of the room, so they might be closing momentarily here. Yeah, I'm not saying that some of these jobs aren't included or not included, it's just if we want this person to be doing something, I think it needs to be spelled out. If we don't want him doing it, then you not put it in yet.
I think administrative role of last comments were crucial. We, we, we're trying to get away from what we know has worked. And we need to move in a different direction. And to your point, I think both of you brought up. Equal concerns about the job descriptions. I will tell you that our job descriptions in Dayton have been way too focused. And they did that. From my experience, to bolster conversation for individuals who was justified, they were doing a lot more than they thought they were doing. And I noticed that these things just got a lot more and longer and longer, trying to pinpoint every single thing. So that that would support when they went to FinCom and the townspeople, the increase in compensation. The problem with doing that, generally with a three or four page job description, which is just a list, so.
And you're never going to have everything on there and then something's going to come up and.
Exactly.
Things change all the time.
Yeah.
We've sought a professionalized government since that time, so I think it's time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, my, my point to that with the, just to get back to what we're talking about with the NIM, I don't see any reason why that couldn't be included in the. You know, the, at least the ICS 700 and 100, just for a frame of reference, if anything. I mean, they might not be involved in things, but I wouldn't be surprised if through FEMA funding, that that's attached to somebody that does paperwork somewhere. Just seeing all of the structures and seeing all the reporting stuff through the federal government. Last thing we want is for them to sign something that now the feds say that they're not ICS certified and kick it back. Yeah, I, I, like, I mean, obviously today's my first meeting and I'm new at this, but every job I've ever had is, is going back to, even in the private sector, to ICS 100 and 700, at least. It just as a reference point, I wouldn't, I would recommend it, but I, again.
Especially processing paperwork and giving people job descriptions would be helpful if you knew what the job description was, you'd give it to people.
Just for clarification, those folks can be trained online, they're not, you know, they're not.
It's only a couple of hours online.
So, so, so based on the, I really, our incident community and stuff. I was like initially cross-stopped, we would add, add that back in and also add NIMs as well.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, I, I understand how it, it kind of seems like any applicable kind of thing that it would include it, but. I would definitely, at least in a public sector job, in the day and age we're in, you at least need the ICS 100 and 700.
Okay.
And I think that should be in any job that gets posted in Dayton, I think that should be in their standard language, so I think they should all understand how it works. Whether they're involved in the emergency or not, just understanding the structure, I think is important.
Is that required that every town employee have that? Or is it just beneficial?
Right now, it's anybody that's on the ICS.
Okay.
That needs it. The, the issue is, we'll step aside for a moment here, is again, Mike Mullen is a new employee in town. It's like he has to get the training because he's obligated to show up at an emergency. Well, what if he decides I'm not showing up at the emergency, what obligation do I have to force him to be here? Board health agent can't. So where, where is that power to get the bodies here if we have an emergency, that we need the bodies? And should it be in their contracts and everything else and, you know, that kind of thing? But obviously, we don't have emergencies every day, so it's a different thing. But I think it should be standard language in contracts and, and stuff like that, and require the NIMs, or at least the ICS 100, any new employee. I think it helps understand the structure in the office too, if you get a problem, go to your immediate supervisor, you don't go all the way to the town manager to say, hey, I got this problem because my coffee is not working. That's not the way this works, you go to your immediate supervisor, so. That's a side note, so. So I assume that's the, at the same standard, the previous office manager was asked by the previous town administrator to bid, proposals and contracts. I'm assuming that is no longer required.
What the expectation would have been, as a chief chairman of office, so like, you know. How like, how I still can responsible like for like putting all those out together and now. Oh, you know, like out to bid, but if I were to ask the administrative clerical, what's the backup? Oh, you know, like some of the type of things that might have, have previously existed in the. Oh, you know, like a scope or whatever, like I don't really see that, so like just out of the ordinary of. Oh, you know, like, oh, like, oh, like, what, oh, like, on what the responsibility. Oh, you know, it really would be if, oh, you know, like if the office manager, like is emailing. Oh, you, oh, you know, different vendors, how to get hopes. I mean, that's a pretty perfunctory. Responsibility, so I. So, yeah, like I really, I mean. So the. Oh, yeah, but the, but, so, yeah, yeah, but the responsibility to actually, you know, to beat the coming off, so like in. Oh, yeah, to land the different comment would be for me.
I don't know if it needs to be in here, but sales to the public, is that something, I know it says interaction with the public, but is sales to the public something should be specified? Just asking, I'm not, I don't care.
Really going down. I, yeah, so like we're going down this add-on list, I mean, I think. So, I mean, one sec. Yeah, like, I mean, we went through a whole wage and classification, uh, study process, kind of like synthesizes this all down. But, oh, and I believe, oh, one second. I might do this, still, it's all encompassing.
Well, it says assist with town health and solid waste related programs. But again, I don't think the word sales should be in there, that's all.
But it's part of the program, then sales program, just like in my office, we have permits. I have to specify that Nancy, you know, sells permits, I mean, it's just part of the, part of the process.
No, I'm just, I'm only asking because obviously I don't want to pigeonhole this, though, well, it doesn't say sales, it just says pay the money or whatever, which is different than.
But there also says, so we're talking about fees.
Proplications, which is a different thing, like the fees from a sale. That's why I just, I, I want to make sure we didn't leave something out that should have been in. Well, for the same reason for inventories and accounting, like that, I don't see spelled out.
That's all related to assisting the public, the public solid waste related programs. Those programs are all well defined. Where if we have a client or we want to sell to the public directly from. Town hall or whatever venue, then that's part of what that program.
I'm, I'm not arguing, I just didn't know what needed to be in there. Say, I don't, you need, my, I don't deal with union contracts on a regular basis, so they know they can be very particular sometimes in the way they're written, so I want to make sure that we cover what is. I'm not disagreeing that it's not part of the program and all that, but.
Oh, oh, like, yeah, like, one of the young opportunities we have, yeah, like is. Uh, yeah, like with the prior office manager, like, I mean, so there was, so there were expectations, there were. So, so they will have practices. One of the things we have, so really the opportunity to do it here with the vacancy. So like we have, as I mentioned before, the ability to set our own new practices, so based on. How we really are in the modern day. Oh, you know, that what. Oh, you know, so once we do that, like in their programs a quarter of the year, I mean. Oh, yeah, they will be really the, the baseline going forward, which I think will be more helpful too.
Um, in underwork environments, the last sentence, you got a frequent contract. In contact.
Okay, um. Oh, 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 uh, but just backing up the, so did you, uh, see a point? Uh, again, uh, in the, in the sentence, uh, assists. Uh, with town. Uh, health and solid waste related programs, I don't. Oh, you know, like I don't. I think it would be the end of the world if we. Like add a file, let's say in pulling, but not limit issue. Programs set as kind of like inventory and sales to the public, that's like what I'm in also. Oh, you know, takes entire one cycle and programs and. I can bulk, yeah, I can pick up. I don't really see how I'm doing that, just. Oh, you know, like specify those, uh, oh, you're like very much like established programs, so. So, uh, oh, why don't we buy and form that?
We often do branch bank sales to retailers too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but.
I don't know if that's considered the public or not. Again, I don't want, I don't even nitpick it, it just is.
Yeah, and, and. Just, just. We don't even know what's gonna happen with solid waste in this town. Solid waste may be privatized and maybe enterprise. We're too far into that. I don't, if you want to get this job description to fill out, I don't see how including that stuff is beneficial. Because that stuff could go away, it's privatized, we're not dealing with that anymore. So by including it here, I understand that we can modify this, but we kind of want to get away from that.
I disagree with that. I just wanted to make sales to the public in, in, in the job description, not spelled out for what it broke.
If you're bondable, and then maybe I don't understand or if those words were bondable, but if you're bondable, you're collecting money.
Yeah.
Uh, money could come from all different sources, so I don't see the need for the redundancy. I actually think it hurts by being too redundant.
The only other thing here is you're creating a department. Who has to do that?
Yeah, but we have a health department already, we just never told them this, we have. So what we actually referred to there is is a border health help department. So it doesn't, so what to my view doesn't even make sense. So, so, so we have a water health. I think what health are three people. Oh, you know, but then we have a department under that that we've always referred. To as a water health, so, 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 but that doesn't make sense because what, so we're actually referring the employees. Actually works through the border health, we're referring to them all once. And that in my view just creates every type of confusion on the side.
This is no different than police department communication center. We're all under the same roof, we all do the same thing, however, there are two different factors. This belongs to strongly as their requirement, this whole department is day-to-day operations. I agree, I think we're, we're doing that, we just need to recognize what it is.
Not opposed, just that never, it's never been called that before, so I don't know if that was changing any of the dynamics, that's all.
Is there a special reason for changing that?
I think it never should have been the way it was previously. We have a board, this is the board, and then we were referring to the people under the board as the board as well. This kind of distinguishes between the two.
Which they're two, they're very different things.
Right.
I mean, same feeling, but the two, they operate completely differently. And we need to get out of the last four or five years, we need to really put our best foot forward and get this figured out. Has worked.
Is there any further discussion?
I don't have any.
No, good.
No, or does anyone prepare to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept it, or the changes that we've agreed upon.
Can I get a second?
A second.
And can I get a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
So, yes, this will go to the second tomorrow night, um. And then we'll be able to post and have it being posted. I'd say, keep moving.
How long are we gonna post it for?
Um, we're required to be by the policy for two weeks.
You want us to ask you to make those couple of changes and send them out to us?
Absolutely.
Alright, we can, um, item B, review, discuss act, intern, administrative support.
So one of, um, so one of the things, uh, with, uh, the current, uh, office managers in departure. At the end of this week, like if we wanna have. If you want to have a plan in place, so, uh, like in the central, where we are and where the board is firing, um. Oh, you know, like we don't, and the department doesn't, uh, fall further underwater. So, um, um, I have all the last few days, uh, I. I've talked at length with the president of the laborers union, uh, you know, about. About the different type of options we have. Uh, like as well. As our options, well, how those options may or may not be impacted by. Oh, like existing interest in. Oh, you know, like it, oh, you know, like in, uh, in the position. Uh, with our current employees as well, we don't, I want to be mindful, and I think we all do. Oh, you know, the fact that anything we do in the interim, oh, yeah, we want to try to present as possible. Oh, yeah, like, oh, any type of. Uh, any type of appearance or perception that any, of how we might actually fill the position in the interim. Oh, like had any type of impact. Oh, you know, in terms of who, like in terms of. In terms of who may be hired in the long term.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, um, oh, you know, like in one of those. Uh, one of the options is parking out. Oh, again, the options that we have. I could actually have this, having, uh, the, uh, the current, uh, office manager. Uh, current. A current office manager for. Current office manager, like fully building into apartment, uh, like perform. Oh, yeah, basically like dual duties and responsibilities over the next four to five weeks. Uh, uh, yeah, to which, uh, so, yeah, like Jim actually spoke with her earlier, like we know. Oh, you know, like. Uh. Oh, yeah, like the board was interested in, uh, she would be interested in helping and assisting in that role. So like we wanted to throw that out there and present it up, so, yeah. So, yeah, I can present it up to the board that that. Oh, you know, so, yeah, this option would be like a very temporary option, just so we have the ability to hire and go through a very open process that way. Oh, you know, like without again, uh, creating. So like any type of like appearance that the position is a favor to one individual or another. Oh, yeah, like at the same time, having a person thankfully who knows really the office, or the dynamics of the office, the functions of the office in the first place. Really. Oh, you know, like I think of the best of a lot of. So like worlds as we are, so like as we go forward in the next, uh, quarter, five weeks, so Jim, do you have anything to add on that?
So, Administrator Malad asked, um, if that would be an option to the board of health and the health department. And I spoke with Nancy and we came up with the following. Uh, this was a collective, uh, discussion between myself, VSO, and Mrs. Pindel. As the veteran service officer and I, both, uh, overseeing Nancy's day-to-day, um, activities. We share, um, responsibilities, so. So what we came up with was, uh, Nancy is not interested in working more than a forty hour week. So that would be five hours additional to where she works now, available to the board of health and the health department. However, we all know that health department requires more than five hours a week. So that means, uh, the veteran service officer and I would have to sort of increase our office time in the, uh, in building for the next. Month or two, to enable Nancy to free up some of her time so that she could, um, she could assist and assist properly. Um, she did say that she'd be willing to do that, uh, she had a couple of requests, um, first, she wanted to make sure that she had the ability to work. On Fridays, uh, for catch-up. And, um. The solution that I came up with, because health department is not online, is that if she wanted to do building department work on Friday, she can do that remotely. Because we have fully automated, um, she can also have the ability to come into the building on Fridays if she so choose. She would like phones for the health department, forwarded to her desk so that she could just work from her desk. And she would like any duties or directives that come from any of the four of you to go through me. Because I know who manages her time. And we need to make sure that the department stays, my department stays on track while this is all going on. So that, she was more than willing, she was excited to help out, uh, especially if that keeps things rolling, um. Justically, it's perfect, quite frankly, um, we just all need to chip in to make this work over the next couple of months. Hopefully it happens quicker than that, but I'm said it'll take two months, I think he's right.
I think it's gonna take time.
I have two questions, um. Oh, now I have one, because I can't remember the other one. Um, you said that you and the veteran Adrian would need to increase your time. Is there budget for you guys to be able to do that?
We would actually, um, so the VSO, I don't manage his budget, he said he could make himself more available, so I'm not gonna question that statement. I would have to rely more on my assistant to do more field inspections for me to stay in the office longer. Um, I already have my own budget and my assistant.
Oh, and the other question was, I forgot again. Never mind.
Just, just clarification too, if, if it comes to a point where I'm low, um, then I would just do a year-end transfer. But I think under the circumstances, uh, you know, it would be appropriate, but we'll try to manage it.
And she's not interested in this position, right, outside of being helpful, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, one of the things I just wanted to make clear in talking about to you and France, like based on, uh, the, um, based on the vacation tale. Uh, that, uh, the, that the parting office manager would be do. Uh, we may, based on when we do hire and sell. Oh, you know, the new office manager position, we may end up maybe go. Oh, yeah, like so like a mentor, yes, yes, so as well, but that's something, but that's something we're anticipating and planning now.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you know, so when we get to the end of the year, like it won't be an issue, it will be something without anticipating and planning for, so.
This is just temporary, so anything falling, so to the point of, um, Nancy, I apologize, Nancy, okay. Um, reporting to you, obviously because she falls under your department. Anything coming from the board of health or the, the health department would go through you to her. But this is just a temporary stopgap until we backfill the position.
Yeah, and that's simply just to manage your time appropriately. I just need to make sure that things are prioritized. We're asking a lot for one person. Um, you know, and that may, by knowing what you need, that may allow me to say, okay, Nancy, I'll take care of this for you and you can work on that. That's all, just, just, just to handle the logistics.
So you're gonna oversee everything?
Sorry?
You're gonna oversee everything?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. You were talking about software that you wanted to put, put into play.
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Yes, so my office is, uh, fully automated with permitting. So it's a permit link, we've been on it for several years now. I've been trying, uh, to get other departments on board, I think. Um, the board of health is finally listening, no fault of anyone here. Um, so it looks like we have those discussions in the months ahead. Um, to try to get the health department and daily permitting responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera. Through permit link.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a process for that though, it doesn't happen overnight, so.
That's something you're gonna be working on?
Uh, as part of this.
Yeah.
I, no.
No.
No, I. We, we can, it can be open to discussion in the future, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think anything, I, I appreciate her stepping up and, and all of this. Help, you know, I think we should still go through our process. I don't think there should be anything significantly changed to the department during this time. You know, so if that's something to be presented later on, I think that's a.
Oh, yeah, in regards to that, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should just leave everything status quo. While we're kind of in, not turmoil, but while we're kind of.
Yeah. So what would be the process for us to implement that, if that was something that we were looking to implement?
Yeah, like, I mean, you speak.
No, um, Nancy, sorry.
So, yeah, it's, um. But, I guess. Um, the board to vote, um, accordingly to offer. Uh, the building. Uh, the building development office manager up to. Uh, uh, five hours a week in overtime. Oh, you have to fill in. Uh, I, I, on a temporary basis. I can tell, uh, the next, uh, full-time office manager is hired. Uh, yeah, that's what I would propose in a motion.
Um, but I just. With, with there being a list of duties and things that we, she could be doing or would be doing, because I'm assuming she doesn't want to come to the board and help me and do minutes. So, um, but would she type up minutes if somebody, if she could watch the video? Is it only processing bills? I mean, what would be the? I don't want to cross the line with her and say, hey, do this, and she goes, no, 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 I'm not doing that.
I'll let you know, uh, but.
Don't be telling Jim.
Yeah, I, I think, I think. Perhaps this should be the catalyst for the board to figure out what do we need to do for the next two months in order to keep things operational? And what can wait?
Right.
Because really, we're still, I'm not, you know, even if, even if VSO and I step in, you're still only getting a person for a few hours a week. You know, maybe ten or twelve a week, so, um, we'll, we'll all do the best we can. But I think there's gonna have to be some prioritizing, although we do, and I think your comment about not changing too much is truth to that. Because we, we, we can only deal with one thing at a time.
Right.
Um. Although there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't even know what the day-to-day stuff would be, so, but we should prioritize that.
Yeah, yeah, maybe three hours, frankly, I mean, in my, I mean, again, we want to. Oh, yeah, provide the board with the construct, like for the interim help, but then, I mean, the implementation, I think is all gonna happen on the day.
Yeah, and maybe as I'm, as I'm talking, as we're thinking about it. The reason why she wants me to be a buffer is exactly that reason. Where if there's a problem or there's a time issue, or, you know, if she can't attend meetings or whatever, then we'll collaborate. And talk it out, figure out how do we, how do we fill this gap? So, and again, it's only.
I understand, but I don't want to. Say to her, hey, Nancy, this, and she goes, no, 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 that, that's not on my list, it's things that I'm doing, you know. So, but if it's, you know, forward the phone calls, whatever, returns, whatever it is, then I know what I can send her to.
Just for clarification, those are, we gotta come to me.
Okay.
I can go to Nancy.
Okay. That's fine.
You're still here full-time, so I'm not making light of it, but you're still here full-time, so.
Is anyone motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. That we use Nancy, Jim, the veteran service officer in the interim temporarily. Until we can get the office rolling the way we need to. I don't think we want to cut it off the second that we hire somebody. Because. Hire somebody, they, they need training, they're gonna need to know what's going on.
We don't know who that person's.
Yeah.
And we're not putting any specific timing on it, because we don't know.
No.
We don't know how long it's gonna take to get somebody.
We don't know.
Right.
Does it makes, it's a good point, I, I, we've taken discussion.
Well, we, we finished making a motion, yes?
Well, is the discussion?
Well, it's still in discussion, go ahead.
I think that maybe none of us have a crystal ball, we don't know just how to apply, maybe we can. Bring up this discussion when you make your recommendation to hire an office manager, and then we can decide, does that need to be? Does it need to be some, oh, you know, does Nancy need to stay on while that's happening?
So, yeah, one thing I would recommend, because we do operate in a union environment and we. I can, we need to emphasize the temporariness, um. Oh, you know, it's all the main, what I would recommend in the motion is that the motion also states, like, uh. Oh, oh, yeah, no more than five hours per week in overtime. I can also, what I would also recommend, it's sort of just so we don't have it open. So we don't have it open, and then maybe, uh, uh, maybe begin with a forty-five day plan theory with the opportunity to revisit. So like at the end, so at the end of the, at the end of the forty-five days, you're like, go know where we are once we get closer to that. How like where we are with the hiring process and who is actually like filling in, and if we need to. Yeah, like. I feel like any more than that, I, yeah, the board has the, so the opportunity at that point to visit it then.
But if we just leave it temporary and not put any timeline on it, we can bring it up at any time, right?
Yeah, then you need to box it out. Uh, it's not a term, it's a temporary to become, oh, longer than temporary and to become permanent, so we want to provide that construct that this is. Yeah, we're being true to what we're saying in terms of.
If this, sorry, um, if this goes, if this happens and this goes forward.
Yeah.
Um, is this art, when we post the job now, or is it, does it have to go to the town selectmen? To change any of this? I'm just thinking in forty-five days, if we're not posting the job for fifteen days.
So, no.
Now we're at third.
Post the job Thursday.
Okay.
I'm just gonna recommend an effective date, and I would recommend no sooner than when the current office manager's last day is.
Yeah, I mean, I would say to that point, be forty-five days for the set on Tuesday, because that is the first full day.
Next, next, sorry, next, so it's the, or whatever?
Same thought.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't wanna say let's, we're gonna post this in fifteen days, and then now we're forty-five days in, and we're losing fifteen days off the top and how, whatever, so.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Can I get a modified motion? It's gonna be a long one.
All right, I make a motion that it's temporary for forty-five days. That we use Nancy, Jim, and, oh, what's his name?
Uh, Greg.
In the interim, until we can get things straightened out. And budget only for five hours a week of overtime.
Mm-hmm. Starting?
Starting January third.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Um, can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and it passes.
So just for the record, it was using the building department office manager. Building Commissioner and the Veterans Agent temporarily up to forty-five days. And up to five hours of overtime per week for the office manager, starting January third twenty-three.
Correct.
All right, new business review discuss act, um, Board of Health meeting schedule.
Uh, I put this on here because we have, and this is gonna dovetail into uh reorganization, all the rest of, we have three new members. Basically, um, when do we wanna meet? How do we wanna do this? Um, I'm also gonna throw out that we have a lot of uh things coming up for January sixteenth, January thirty-first, February. So we may need to have more than just one meeting in January. So I kinda figured we should kick around what we have for schedule and see where we're at. And um, see what time works, because some may wanna meet one o'clock on Tuesdays might work for you guys instead of four-thirty on Thursdays, or six P M on a Tuesday. Whatever works, I just, we need to make sure we have something that works for everybody.
What works for you guys?
What were we doing before? Was it the second Thursday or?
Yes.
Second Thursday, four-thirty.
I, I liked that, because I already had it carved out in my schedule, but if it doesn't work for other people, I can make other things work.
I can make that work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make it work.
Alright, so that currently leaves our next meeting is January twelfth for our regular meeting. We have a meeting on January ninth is the Board of Health or the Select Joint Meeting. So do we wanna just stick with those two meetings right now, or do we wanna try and add, and we're gonna need another meeting before the end of January?
I think we could go with a special meeting that we need, rather than schedule one right now.
Oh, we're gonna have to have one, because we're gonna have to build the budget. Cause like, give it January thirty, right?
So we should plan this, get special meeting now, without making?
Well, we don't have to do it now, but I just want everybody thinking that, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is there still a need for joint meetings while we're in transition?
I don't think so.
So, so, so one of the things I would say, because we are going to budget, uh, planning. Uh, process, one of the things that uh was introduced at the last joint meeting. Uh, was, oh, you know, a, um, oh, yeah, the capital inspection services of the department. Oh, you like, and because we need to know. Uh, so, oh, you know, that may shape, and how. Of the budget, oh, you know, to be impacted, and so we plan based on that. Oh, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I think I shared a segment in the room that we're all kinda meeting out. Um, so, so, yeah, so, yeah, but I do think that meeting. Oh, you know, like, you really, that's coming the direction we're going, um, yeah, needed.
What's your opinion?
Well, I did, I was just, my thought was us going back to saying that we weren't gonna make any changes while we have um Nancy until we have, so.
That was practice to the office.
Yes. And I. I mean, I agree with that, but I think, I mean, again, I mean, the budget process is in. Oh, I just, oh, I can wait and uh let's see to where we end up. Yeah, we have to sort of plan for it to some degree, and, oh, like, and also. Oh, you know, like, so, yeah, from the, so, so, yeah, yeah, from the inspection services. How if we're gonna time track things out, so how we start to that and sort in the budget as well. Uh, what we do was sound raised, and I know, uh, you know, that the, the slight that I'm interested. Oh, you know, like, you're actually getting into a place where, oh, they can have the help they get done to have a contract as well. That's kind of something that is a priority for them as well. So like, I guess, I mean, I just think, so if we hold off now, we're gonna be. Oh, you know, like going down a road we've been in in the past, and then we'll be seeking to regroup, and so like, starting from scratch again. So, I mean, I do actually think after, uh, for the first, frankly, in the four months, we do have, uh, you know, some. How we can some momentum out behind where we're trying to go now, and I mean, I hopefully we can. Oh, yeah, like, really, I mean, I don't, so I don't think anything we would do, uh. Oh, you, at which point would be changing, oh, in the construct immediately, or just. So help us, so we know how we're planning for July first. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, that's my two cents, if that helps.
What about what it's doing, yeah?
Uh, by the end of January?
So, and it's right, um, soon, knowing the circumstances, yeah, you gotta be hard on those net to be first.
No.
That's wrong with that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
How much of an impact would it be on our budget? Like, is it, do we do our budget? Does it get done by town hall and, and? I, I'm not trying to say that, that we're not as important as anybody else, but is it, if we hold off, is it gonna make a real impact on, on a budget for Board of Health?
So, I mean, one of the things that can come just brought it up, I mean, again, I mean, when we start the budget process, we do. Uh, you know, I've always anticipated because of how the process, you know, like flexibility or like the room, you know, to. Oh, yeah, the moment to move things around based on the conversations that we're having, uh, you know, so. So ideally, uh, we would help the construct of the budget, uh, we, you know, uh, by the end of January. Oh, you know, uh, but based on that. Oh, you know, there is always a potential that things will evolve. Oh, like in the F Y twenty-two, in the F Y twenty-three process, for example, so if we actually did that to cash. Oh, you know, the cash of the increase in numbers, I don't think until the first part of March. Oh, you know, and those were some, so those were some pretty substantial increases, and so like, we just like to, like, so, yeah. Uh, by the end of January, have like a starting, you know, uh, it was not. Oh, you know, hot and fast, but we wanna like start with something, so we know how we're gonna be speaking. And, um, and, yeah, but, uh, so, yeah, typically in terms of the process. Oh, you know, the, uh, the budget tells start with the departments themselves. Uh, like, and then the departments that are currently, oh, uh, governed by a board, we do like to have a. So like, at least an initial board vote in place. Oh, you know, oh, yeah, to, oh, you have to, oh, you have to submit. The budget to, to the town administrator and the town accountant, so we know there's some. Uh, some thought and buying behind the proposed budget, and then, so like going, so then, so then going from there. But, yeah, like, we do anticipate, so, uh, that, so, so that things are gonna move, things are gonna evolve, things are gonna. Oh, yeah, like, I mean, it's a very smooth process.
So it's, it's very valid, two quick points, and I only wanna move on. Board of Health has always been late to the table with their budgets, which is an issue, because it's a very large budget. Um, the second thing is the department head usually does the budget. In the absence of a department head, which is a discussion for another day, not today. The board has to figure out who's gonna do the budget. But it starts here, and then the last uh point is, this is a zero-based budget here. The Board of Select would have mandated that all departments start from zero, and come up with a number and justify that number. So this budget process is gonna be much more different for those departments who have gotten those zero-based budgeting. Fortunately, when I took over my department years ago, I started at zero, because I was building a department that I knew nothing about. So I've already done all that, but for the Board of Health, it's never done that. It's gonna be quite a process to share, so.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna say that we've always made the January thirty-first deadline, we've always had a special meeting in the January to vote the budget to send it over. It's the changes that came in in March or April from the trash that brings off. But we always wanted it, and Tom Pyers always did it, so.
Um, D Review Discuss Act, reorganization of the board.
So we're not scheduling any other meetings?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I don't know, um. Uh, if we're all here, we might as well do, schedule special meetings so that we can discuss the budget. And there was, I think there was a few other things, but.
One of the things that's gonna be happening is obviously, somebody's gotta prepare the budget so that the Board of Health can discuss it. Usually it takes more than one meeting to get it finalized, because there's a lot of moving targets, shall we say. So that's why we always have a special meeting right on January thirtieth or whatever, twenty-ninth, in order to, to finalize it. Um, before we kick it over, so if we don't start talking about the budget till the twelfth, that doesn't give us a lot of time to put it together.
So it sounds like you're suggesting we should meet, is that next week? I'm confused, yeah, next week.
Because, so there were a few items I, I tried to put on this agenda, one of which was the budget. Um, another was the my evaluation, which has to be done by January sixteenth.
I'm not so sure exactly.
Yeah, I think it's around January sixteenth, so that has to be done, but then, and typically, one of the board members will do it as opposed to the entire boards.
There would, there was gonna be changes in that, right, Mike?
Yeah, we're gonna get a memo, I will be either, uh, e- uh, e- uh, either, uh, in a day or tomorrow. I can actually, based on that memo, like, extend a timeline that. Like, extend the timeline that board and committees have, uh, have, uh, have to evaluate their employees, because the way. Oh, again, that we've done evaluations at the town, uh, like, where like, if you're a non-union employee and. Oh, yeah, like, and your department is managed by a board, just have one of the. Oh, one of those board members do the evaluation, it's not, it's like actually fair to the employee. So like, uh, 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 for the rest of the board, and then when you do, something we have had. So like, all members of the board or committee evaluate. Uh, uh, a non-union employee, like each of those individual evaluations. Uh, have our, like, have our waste historically come into play during the opening meeting, whereas they actually should be aggregated. Oh, yeah, like, in, uh, in terms of what the results of the, uh, so in terms of what the results of the, uh. Um, evaluation, uh, so we're gonna get information, I'll probably, uh, uh, probably practically speaking by tomorrow afternoon. So, and then with that, practically speaking, we're going to extend, uh, the January sixteenth deadline as well.
And regardless of what it do, the, the budget takes priority over.
It does, it's just, it's a matter of something that had to be done in January, only to vote with half a vote, vote nominate one person. Um, in the report is another thing, that normally one member of the board has written a report, it's always the chairman, oh, I shouldn't say that, it's, um. Other board members, honestly, it wasn't entirely, uh, the chairman, but, um, somebody's gotta work on that too, because the annual reports are due by. Wow, sorry. They go, well, whatever, but again, we wanna, I wanna get.
I'm well on priority as well.
I don't wanna. I'm trying to say, start thinking about it now, we can put it together, because, yeah, I wanna look at it.
No, I understand.
Hey, guys, gonna have this on, I'm saying, you know what, um, I got three days to do this, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's why I would have a lot of anxiety next Monday night, um.
Just not, just not, next Monday night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so going off of what Todd's saying, is anyone opposed to having a special meeting? So that we can start the budget talks next week?
No, next week?
Yes.
Does it, uh, just a suggestion, some administrator's point, does it make sense to have it after the training meeting on the night? If that's gonna sort of upset the?
Um.
Well, we have, yeah, we have the regular meeting on the twelfth, so. We can start on the twelfth, we just need another meeting on the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, yeah.
So we could decide on the twelfth, when?
Mm-hmm, and then is his point that we're gonna have that ninth meeting. All right, we'll leave that as. It's that.
So right now, the ninth and twelfth are the next two meetings, and just leave it at that.
Did we need a motion for that, or is that fine how it sits? All right, um, now we're moving on, Re-Discuss Act, reorganization of the board.
Well, let's go first.
So we have a new member, so when we have a new member, we reorganize the board. I'll have much more discussion on it than that, does anyone else?
So this board usually has a chairman, a clerk, and a member, is the, uh, the makeup of the board. Um. Obviously, the chairman's job is to run the meeting, um, prove the agenda, um, they have to sign payroll, uh, bills, that kind of stuff, generally. Although this board in the past has given the authority for all the board members to sign, so if the chairman's not around, we can grab somebody else. I also have the authority to leave the rest of these on around. The clerk, their job would be, oh, somebody else can probably describe it better, but they're supposed to, you're a clerk for several boards, right?
Yeah, one.
He seems really excited about it, too.
Well, in the absence of an office manager, you'd be taking the minutes, um, typing up the minutes, that kind of stuff, doing the agendas, I guess, presumably. Well, and the minutes too, I'm assuming. Right, in, in the minutes?
Yeah, my experience, the minutes, I've definitely been the clerk. Uh, the, the agenda has always, in my, just experienced, been completed until the by the chair.
Even the offering of it? Uh, putting it in the format?
And, yeah, and I just.
One committee is yes, but with the board, the office staff would normally prepare, the chairman is the one that says this is yet on the agenda.
Right?
And then the third member is literally just a member, um, they don't have any responsibilities other than showing up. However, historically, our board has stepped in and done work in the office, including filing, um. Paperwork, writing regulations, that kind of stuff, and I am gonna be asking. Paperwork, writing regulations, that kind of stuff, and I am gonna be asking, we have, uh, like eighteen hundred, nine hundred boxes of these. That all need a sticker to put on every one of them, in order for us to get them out while we wait for the next shipment to come in. So we'd like to take nine hundred bucks a month and put stickers on it, would very appreciate it, cause I don't think I can ask me to see the two.
Yeah, or maybe primetime loves stickers, I don't know.
Right, that's fine, like, I'm just, you know, we need it done, so, or, but anyhow, this is. So.
And, and the member doesn't, you have nothing, considering it's a lot of representation on other committees, so. There's plenty.
You're just as important. Right, so we need motions.
Well, still the discussion.
Oh, uh, still discussing, sorry.
What's your availability for chair?
The same that it's been, while I've been doing it, in the intermediate.
A couple of questions, we know that Todd's thinking right now, that's why we're getting some help. The minutes, if, if you can't do them, not the minutes, the, the agenda. I think you should pass it to one of the board members versus asking Todd to do something else.
Yeah, typing it up, I mean, that doesn't take much time. I don't see any.
What, the, the agenda?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
No, I mean, this last week was a lot more time than should have been to put an agenda together, cause it was a lot of. Discussion about how to get things on the agenda and all the rest of it, and then, and I don't take this the wrong way, we've put any changes after it was posted. Um, the agenda's had to post in forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, so anything you want on there, take it off or whatever, time work out ahead of time, cause your bias agenda is just a painting book.
Right, I, I was waiting to get, uh, the agenda to see what was on there originally, but it went to my wrong email. So I didn't see it when it came in.
And I already apologized, so I'm not.
I think while we have temporary help in the office, I think if the clerk or members willing to type it up and format. Distributed, I think that would be great.
Yep, that's no problem.
Just trying to take a little bit more of Todd's plate.
Patrick, do you have discussion, or were you done with your discussion?
Uh, yeah, until I think of another question.
No, I, I mean, so we talked about like the, the structure about who does what as well.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't. I don't mind helping out, I don't mind pitching in, I mean, we're, Todd has got a ton of stuff on him, so I don't mind helping out either way, I don't really have much to add to it.
Okay, my thought was to make a recommendation or a promotion, have Nicole be the chair. I'm working on the budget with, uh, Jim, Todd had asked me to start working on that. But we also need somebody for the solid waste committee, would you be willing to? Join the solid waste committee?
Well, that's, we're gonna get to that next, that's E.
But that's part of reorganizing the board too.
No, so, so right now, we're just going through who's gonna be clerk, chair, member, and then the next one will go into solid waste. And then we'll go into.
Because it doesn't, the chairman that's on those committees, it's any one of the three.
Alright, okay. So what do you want for motion?
Well, somebody needs to nominate who they would like to be chair. And then that would get seconded, and then vote, or you could get two nominations or whatever, usually with three people, it's not usually multiple nominations. But that would normally be how it would go, and then there'd be a nomination clerk.
Okay, I'll make a nomination for Nicole to be the chair.
So that's a, a second, is that how we do this? It's the same as everything else, okay?
Yeah, for Nicole to be the chairperson.
So you second, and can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, can I get a motion for clerk?
I'll make a motion that I'll take care of, it's okay with everybody else.
Can I get a second?
Oh, normally, somebody else will nominate.
Okay.
And so. Okay, you'd say, you'd say you'd be willing, and then you would nominate, you would nominate.
Okay, I, I'm just saying, I'm willing.
True, if you're willing, I nominate Paul to be the clerk.
Okay.
Um, and then I, would I sit down for that, because does he say yes to himself? He does say yes to himself? No, I sat down. I mean, I shut down and, um. I second that and then a vote.
Aye.
And then I sit down, I'm an aye. All right, and our, our member, can you make a motion for the member?
I'll make a.
Oh, no, you don't need.
All right, then we're done.
Let's.
All right, um, next, we're gonna be review discuss act, board of health representative to the solid waste committee.
So both of this one and the next one, these are subcommittees of the board of health. That, uh, have a membership that was created by a selectman, and that includes, both of these committees actually have a health agent on it. And one member of the board of health, solid waste committee generally meets in the evenings on.
Mondays at four o'clock.
Is where, kinda where we're at at the moment, stormwater meets on the third Wednesday of every month at one o'clock, usually probably like a two to three hour meeting. Um, so if that helps anybody think about what they're gonna do, solid waste is dealing with all things, transfer stations, curbside trash pickup, that kind of stuff, recycling. Uh, stormwater deals with stormwater and projects and all sorts of other stuff we can. Cause all the people here can enlighten you if you wanna be enlightened, um, we could go on for a while about them, but.
Well, normally, one o'clock isn't a good time for me.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, today was a little bit different, it was easy for everybody, but on a normal basis, I don't know if I'd commit to one o'clock. Best time they're gonna be having them.
Yeah, generally, I couldn't either, now, what if none of us could commit to that time, what happens then?
Discuss it in the meeting, before we meet. At any time. Okay, I have a question as well, um, you had said that there's specific language that specifies which individuals need to be on the stormwater, correct?
Uh, for solid waste.
Not a storm one?
No, the, the, the stormwater has always, when the members have passed. I establish more by tradition. And, you know, that's why you're going back to July with the reappointments. Uh, you know, there is, it's to talk then, because we had, oh, you know. We have those specified positions, we have greater flexibility to think about consolidating that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a suggestion, I'm the agent for the board of health, having since I was, I've been here. I can be stormwater representation on the board, and report that accordingly at the meetings.
Are you already on the board?
Yeah, you're already on the board, cause.
Why can't, why can't I be?
You get two votes?
No, one, one, we, we, we lose.
Then maybe now we need the number, or we already?
Then we need to drop another body, that's what happens.
Well, that's up to somebody else to make that decision.
Well, we need to start speedrunning, stormwater is way too consuming, this is the catalyst to start it, everybody's busy during the day. I'm already an employee, I'm already an agent for the board of health, I'll report back to the board on stormwater, jointly with you, cause you're the agent. And stormwater will have to figure it out.
I do agree with that, but also, I, without Nancy present, I don't know how comfortable.
So one of the things, there's no, I would say, school that a committee needs being on number. Like, members either, so, so, yeah, like, with even in the number, I mean, I really don't, yeah, I really don't. So I really don't see there being, frankly.
Okay, we did talk about that, we wanted to kind of pull back a little on that, um, like you said, this might be the.
And I know that, uh, you mentioned Nancy being here, but she, one of the joint meetings that we had. Made evident that Steve wants to handpick what was gonna be on, on the committee. Which is the only committee that I'm, I know that one person handpicks who's gonna be on. The rest is usually done by interviews or some type of procedure, not just handpicked.
Well, this might be a start to, um, rethinking some.
Right.
I have no problem with that, generally, anyway, if you saw when they curse on.
Any discussion?
No, I, I can't commit to, though.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I can't, I'd be coming from Burlington, so.
Yeah.
So is that something that we can, when can we, is this something we can motion now, or?
Do it right then, when it comes up, after solid waste.
Okay, so, so on solid waste, um, I did have interest, if nobody else had interest, I really love solid waste.
Really?
No, I do, I do like it, and I think it was Todd's on PowerPoint, but really, it was moving.
Really?
Sarcastic, I just sound like this, it's just my voice, uh, but I did, I, I did like it.
Great, invite somebody new.
I thought you had, I thought you had, I was gonna say you had too much when you played already, but.
No, I, I.
You can handle it.
I like.
I have no objection.
All right, can I get?
Make a motion before you change your mind.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, um, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and that passes.
I have to be, you just told you, you know, the next meeting is Monday, January ninth.
I already have it in my book.
So, yeah, the next meeting, so.
Oh, God.
I get a question, I hear down, the ninth meeting, what time?
Uh, one, what means that, oh, one, it's always in six o'clock, six.
Solid waste is four, and the joint meeting is at six.
So six o'clock on the ninth, and what about the twelfth?
The fourth, I mean, right now is the time.
Well, that's right, that's our regular meeting. Okay.
So the solid waste is first and the board of selectmen is second, oh, I had it the opposite.
Maybe, that's way too far ahead of me to think right now.
Right. Um, review discuss act, board of health representative for the stormwater committee, so we kind of already discussed this. Um, is there any more discussions, anyone ready?
We need a motion, I'll make a motion that, let's see, I gotta take that position, pause.
Second, sorry.
Um, vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, that passes. Input, do we have any public input? I know we have one resident on Zoom.
Uh, no, he's muted himself, but he can hear us.
Okay.
Dave, you have any questions, Dave?
No, sir.
Hi, Dave.
How you doing? How's everyone doing?
Good, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, so if we have no, no public input, um, I guess we can get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, and a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned at two twenty-seven.
Right, thank you, Mr. Wolf, meeting over.